If we could all stand for the pledge, and then a moment of silence. Ms. Francis, we can lead us to the pledge.
Pledge and lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a moment of silence for our men and women in the armed forces. Thank you. Is Mr. McGuire here?
Joe?
Oh, sure.
I think it's McGuire.
All right, sure. All right. Whoops. Oh.
What we're doing is highlighting wonderful things that go on in our community. Our children, our volunteers, and what we do which makes our town so special. So one of the things I'd like to do tonight is honor someone that's very special to us in our community, Mr. McGuire. Whereas Patrick J. McGuire was born in the Bronx, New York, to Joanna and Patrick McGuire II. He attended schools in New York and New Jersey, including New Yorker University, and whereas Patrick Mary Jennings, on May 15, 1965, had moved from New Jersey to New Milford in 1978. They have four children, Patrick, Brendan, Colleen, and Aaron. They're also proud grandparents of Ashley Marie, Patrick Hunter, and whereas Patrick worked for Union Carbide Corporation for 33 years, and he was also the administrative aide to Mayor Arthur Piper from 1995 to 2001. And whereas Patrick is a wonderful bad pipe player, and has been playing since high school. He's a proud charter member of the Selfie Cross Pies and Drums since 1990 in Danbury, where he plays for area organizations and events, including New Milford.
That's right.
Including ceremonies for fire departments, police department, VFW, American Legion, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Pearl Harbor Day, dedications, village fair days, and Thanksgiving lunch at the Children's Center. And whereas Patrick dedicates a lot of his time to the community as currently a member of the St. Francis Xavier Knights of Columbus, the 9/11 memorial maintenance committee, an honorary member of Water Witch House Company Number Two, and the New Milford Police Honor Guard. He's an advocate of the Donate a Life campaign, and was named the 2018 Irishman of the Year, and along with his wife Mary, was crowned King and Queen during 2013 Village Fair Days. Now therefore I keep past Mayor of the town of New Milford to hereby express the gratitude of the citizens of the town of New Milford and thank Patrick J. McGuire for all that he does and continues to do for our wonderful town.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Next public comment.
I only have one, Mr. Mayor. Todd, uh, work him. Thank you, Todd.
It's just me. Okay, I support the library vote coming up. It has nothing to do with the fact that my wife works there at all, really, not to be at all, totally unrelated. She's not allowed to be here because she works for the library and I am, so I got basically kicked out of the house tonight, and here I am. So basically, we thought it would be helpful to have a show of support for the library. We all think it's a great thing. I think most of everybody's been behind it, but I just thought it would be helpful if we got a show of support from everybody, so I invited everybody out to the, uh, we're gonna be on the Saturday, November 3rd, 9:00 to 11:00, on the green, and right in front of the library. So if you want to bring a sign, BYOS, bring your own sign, or whatever you want to do, just to show a little bit of support for the library. I think it's a great thing. I honestly do. I could get into it, but, you know, you guys have all heard that already. In terms of equal representation, if there's a rally against the library, I don't know where that is. And if there was one, I would not tell you where it is because I don't want anyone going to that rally. So 9:00 to 11:00, November 3rd, 9:00 to 11:00 on the green. Hope to see everyone there. Thank you, that's it.
You answered the question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll keep the mayor's comments very brief. First of all, I'd like to thank or congratulate again our New Milford High School band for their additional, they continue to win their competition, so we'd like to thank them again, placing first place. Outstanding job, way to represent our town. Thank you. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit quickly about the roads. So we continue to work on Long Mountain Road. We've completed Phase 1, which is a reclamation of the southern portion of Long Mountain. Done the actual subbase and done the paving. We've now moved on to Phase 2, where we're gonna continue on with that endeavor. We're looking at a completion date of the end of November for Long Mountain Road. We talked to our contractor. He feels confident in being able to do that, weather permitting, so we're continuing to move on that. For those that were here, Great Brook Road, that was finished last on Friday. Milling and paving was done there. Great Brook was also done. Some of the continued work that will be done during this portion of the week is we're looking to finish up. Stephanie was done. We're looking to move to Sega, and we're looking to move to, I believe, uh, I forget the other name of the other road that we're moving on. John, do you know the other road?
I don't.
Okay. There was another road that we were, oh, Carmen Hill 1. We were looking to get done and completed. We're also looking to where Pickett District is, the railroad crossing. We're looking to have that done by the end of November. We partnered with Houston Valley Railroad, and we're looking to get that done and completed. We're also in the process of hiring a design engineer and a surveyor. Bringing them in-house, as I've talked about before, is gonna save the town money, as well as they'll be working seven, you know, five days a week, eight hours a day, on New Milford roads. Currently, our consultants work on not only our roads, but other roads. So we're looking to implement that. When we do implement that, that should be a cost savings, as well as getting our design plans ready for when we're gonna break ground, which is gonna be in the spring. We're also looking to do with our Roads Committee, our five-year capital plan, breaking out the roads year by year, so that our engineers are gonna know which roads needing an engineer first, and how we're gonna do it. We're gonna properly plan and properly execute, which will bring more roads, more efficiency, and a greater transparency to our taxpayers. We're also looking at partnering with our roofs, which we've been doing with our Board of Education partners. The high school's already being worked on to repair the damage that was done during the storm, but we're also looking at the roofs of Hill and Plain, of Saranoke, and of Northville. Saranoke will be the one that's we're gonna be doing next. I'll be bringing back those information and numbers to the Town Council. Also, we're looking at different ways that we can save money. One of the ways that we're looking with our Board of Education partners is our health insurance, which continues, as everyone else, to rise at a rapid clip. So we're looking at opportunities to save in that respect. We'll be bringing those back to the council when we have some firmer numbers. But we're looking at all cost efficiencies. Another thing is we have decided to use Verizon in our fleet management. And what Verizon is going to do, we're gonna be installing navigation and tracking on all of our town vehicles. They're gonna be allowed to use it the most efficient way when we need to change the oil, where they go, what the mileage is gonna be, and what the effectiveness is on the gas mileage. And also, when they go, how they go, we're all gonna track that, data mine that, and see if there's ways that we can create some efficiencies. And talking with Verizon, they're talking about a 20% efficiency lift, so that would be a nice savings for the town of New Milford. We're also looking at other efficiencies. We're also looking at through all our departments, how we can create those efficiencies and those dynamics. So I'll be bringing those back to the council next week, our next meeting, and the meetings after. Also, I've talked to our Board of Education partners and our Board of Finance partners. November or December, we are going to do a joint meeting of all three bodies, where we're gonna talk about the budget, and moving forward, we as a town are gonna see how we're gonna implement things. Planning is the key. Transparency to use the taxpayers' paramount, and we're going to be doing that. So I'll be following that up in the next couple of meetings to the Town Council to let you know how we're going with those. With that being said, I'd like to move on next to our next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. And for those in the public, this is the second time that we've done this. These are some regular business, and if it is not something that one of our council people feel needs to be pulled off the agenda, it's something that we just approved and we move on, is to expedite the agenda. Councilwoman Francis?
Uh, move to council approve items 5A through D on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Item 6, the Department of Emergency Service and Public Protection. We have a resolution. I move for the council to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved, the town of New Milford may enter into, with, and deliver to the state of Connecticut, Department of Energy Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And it further resolve that Pete Bass as mayor of the town of New Milford is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of New Milford Council, New Milford Town Council, excuse me, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 6B, move to create a nonprofit application subcommittee consisting of five members for a duration of six months, beginning October 22nd, 2018, ending April 22nd, 2019. The charge of this committee is to review funding applications from nonprofits and make recommendations to the Town Council and the Board of Finance.
And this was, as we-
Your second question?
Your second.
Second.
Thank you. And this is to, as we, as the nonprofit subcommittee had brought to the council, we approved. This is our new application procedure, so when nonprofits come in to apply for grant funding, if it is available, and that will be when we look at the budget, that they've actually gone through an application process now, where they fill out the application. Now this committee will review the applications, and will make recommendations to the town, to the mayor, and then to the Town Council. It is in the Town Council's sole discretion, as it always is, to either look at those and approve those, deny those, whatever the wish of the council is. But this is to kind of expedite it, and because we never had a proper process, this kind of at least lets the council see the recommendations from this committee. Yes, ma'am.
And so if I think about the budget cycle, right, so we really need their recommendations by February and March. I just want to be clear that although this term goes to April 22nd-
Correct.
-I confirm they'll be coming sooner with recommendations.
They'll actually have a January, because that's when I'm getting-
January.
Yes.
So why is it temporary as opposed to?
Because it's only needed, and then we'll reform another one next year, so it's-
You want different people doing it all?
Correct.
Question later, Baron.
Mr. Mayor. It's like giving out scholarships. That's not gonna be easy, Mr. McGuire, but it's a great idea.
Process makes it better than no process.
Any other discussion on that? Number 7. Oh, we gotta move on. Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7, move to approve the following appointments and reappointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Commission on the Arts, John C. Maxwell III, filling vacancy, October 22nd, 2018, November 30, 2020. Local Emergency Planning, appointment of Larry Gunnerman, filling vacancy on CERT, October 22nd, 2018, through November 30, 2018. Nonprofit Application Subcommittee, the following, all with terms of October 22nd, 2018, through April 22nd, 2019. Catherine Francis, Walter E. O'Connor, Cameron Murcany, Sharon Ward, and an unaffiliated vacancy yet to be named.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, Chief. On the local emergency planning, 10:22 to 11:30, I mean, it's five weeks.
It ends.
Am I reading that right?
Correct, it ends, then we have to-
Reappoint.
Reappoint.
Okay.
He's filling a vacancy.
Okay.
And as far as the vacancy in the other one, you just have it on top of there?
Different term. On the nonprofit.
Yeah, for the nonprofit.
We're waiting.
If someone's interested, or do you have some?
We have some people just waiting to-
There's a couple people that are just waiting to-
Make a decision.
Gotcha.
It's not easy.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, Doug.
No, that's okay. I know the reason we're doing this is because we had a problem with, number one, somebody just asking for money and not showing up. So there's gonna be some guidelines where they have to fill out an application prior to-
So they fill out, yep. So we approved the actual nonprofit application.
Right.
We brought to council, there's an application package that they fill out now.
Right.
And then the application package, including financials-
Sure.
Reason, impact on the community, gets reviewed by this application subcommittee. They'll then make that recommendation to the mayor's office and then to the council. And then it's the purview of the council to either take those recommendations, not take them, but it kind of expedites the process. Because we found prior to, it really wasn't a process.
Right.
It was kind of a mix mash kind of thing, so this provides some consistency.
Well, we know who, we'll know the ones that they recommend against also.
Sure.
And I noticed you have a council and a finance member.
Yes.
Is that purpose?
Absolutely.
And that's probably, is that part of the charter, or not charter, but that's part of our decision, is we want-
As far as the process, so you have a council person and a board of finance person-
Close.
-that are on this committee to help guide the committee.
Are they gonna, are they gonna make a questionnaire for them, or is there something?
Sorry. Okay, we approved already as a council, the application and the other documents that go with it, and it's quite extensive, although simple enough to fill out. And the criteria for the decision is multi-multi-faceted, so you-
Good. And if someone's gonna ask money, they should be accountable to give us information.
Absolutely. And financials.
Midterm and final and everything.
I agree. Councilman Baron.
All right, going back to the local emergency planning, are we concerned whether he is an X, Y, Z, R, U, D, I?
There's no designation, are there?
Uh, I can-
Five by five, does it-
Larry Gunnerman? I don't know the-
I have no problem with that.
Minority rule? I don't.
But I will find out for it.
Okay, I get it. Just, just a point of interest.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 8, we have the Community Center Committee here to address the questions posed by council members back on September 10th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks.
Speaking on behalf of the Community Center Committee, I was deputized to come forward-
And don't say.
To make a pitch, so I will. But I need some help. I have this. You have the cottons. I'm just gonna try to fiddle around here and see if I can make this work.
I, I just have a question.
Exactly.
The, in keeping with the decision made by this council for our rules, that things that were not in place on Wednesday of the agenda needed to be in place by Wednesday, I understand now, just correct me if I'm not right, that the PowerPoint we have in front of us that was just submitted is a streamlined, condensed, clearer version of the multi-page that was first?
It is.
Okay, and you're not gonna read this to us, right?
God forbid.
I mean, you'll walk us through it.
You'll, you'll notice-
Won't drag us through it.
You have it in front of you. It's an eye chart to begin with, so-
It is, a little bit.
Yeah, so I wasn't gonna do that, but I was going to try and put it up.
You know, Ted, Dr. Decker.
Okay.
They don't know how to help.
Greg, Belairo.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
I don't know how you got deputized, Mr. Oaks, if you don't know how to start this. I don't know how you got deputized.
I got deputized because I have a weak mind.
We're ready here? I should watch.
Yeah, we all should watch.
There we go.
Don't block guys' light.
I had to turn off like half the lights to be able to-
Can you pull the screen down, or no?
No.
Just leave, just leave it the way it is.
The screen is very-
I guess we can see it with the lights on.
It really doesn't keep your best interest. Press power, you wait. I give you that.
Little bit of practice. Okay. The Community Center Committee presented to the Town Council on the 10th of September. And the result of that was that there were many, many questions asked, most of which couldn't be discussed, or the committee really didn't have the answers to those questions down pat at that time, for a variety of reasons. Subsequently, Councilman Sizmanski and the mayor asked a total of 22 questions that were not covered in the presentation. There's gonna be some, I'm gonna go through that. I'm gonna go through that by Mayor Bass's questions first, and Councilman Sizmanski's questions second. There will be some overlap, because they asked questions that are somewhat similar. And I'll try to, there'll be some overlap in the answers, but I'll try to do that as expeditiously as possible. As I promised, I'm not gonna read the slides. Okay, so the mayor asked, how many emails did the survey then go to? And the answer was that we sent 14,115 emails, so we got about a 10% response rate at 1442. Committee didn't have any access to the emails. They were supplied by the various groups in town, primarily the library and the BOE. And the 10% response rate is pretty good for email. Now, second question, verification that people are not able to respond more than once. We can't verify that. We can't guarantee that. When the council, the committee got started on this process, they used the public libraries survey monkey tool to do it. We were under the impression that that tool would, that people could not respond twice from the same IP address. It turned out that that wasn't correct. Some people managed to respond twice. And since the committee didn't have access to the email addresses, we couldn't validate who responded at all. We just know that there are 1,400 plus that did respond. We don't know who they were, and that's fine. We didn't necessarily need to know who they were. So we, you know, one of the things we'll talk about later on is Great Blue. We did reach out to them. They have their own web-based tool for electronic surveys. As you know, the idea is that they'll do 400 telephone surveys. And Greg Mullin got them to agree to do another 1,500 web-based questions. And we are pretty sure that they'll be able to spot any differences in type of response between the 400 which are scientifically arrived at and the 1,500 which will be arrived at by some combination of what the Great Blue does and what the town has in terms of emails. And I just want to sort of address a couple things here. Why Great Blue? They were the cheapest, and they happened to have a model. They did work in Simsburg. The work in Simsburg is quite like what at least the committee thinks they ought to do for New Milford, which was they looked at town services that were not presently offered. Working with their committee, they came up with a rough cost of what those services would be, and were able, in their questioning, to say, would you take a pool if it added X dollars to your taxes that year? Yes or no? So we thought that that framing, that is, we, it's easy to say yes to a service. It's another thing to say, oh yeah, I want that service, and it costs $400 on my taxes. So we thought that that was, that was, that type of experience was unique, at least in the four companies we looked at. And so we would recommend, that's why we recommended using them. Final thing, and this is, this is personal. Great Blue's gonna do call center survey work. I happen to be somebody who ran a large call center operation for a public company. So I got the experience. I have four centers, over 1,000 in staff. So when the time comes, if we go forward with that, if you guys approve it, so Great Blue's the guys to do it, I can go and sit in their call center and monitor what they're doing. And I can, I have a good enough BS detector about that, that we'd be fine, I think, with that, if that's the way we go. Next question, what should the composition of this community center be? Well, the composition, whatever it is, is probably not a one-time deal. Services in the town will change. Demographics in the town will change. Demand for services will change. So if we're talking about what the services should involve, when we did our, our own internal survey, people seemed to like the idea of the agencies who had a role in delivering the person-to-person services and educational and recreational programs. But in my mind, the final answer on this should take place after a real survey, a professional survey. And one thing that we are finessing here is the legal structure. What should, one of the questions the mayor asked the committee to look at was, what should the legal structure be? And from my perspective, that needs to be addressed later. We may get there. I hope we'll get there. I have some ideas about that. I know other members of the committee have ideas about that. But in my mind, that's something that should come later in the game, rather than decide that now and then try to fit something to it. What functions the community center are still in place in '79? Most of them are. And they're, they're, they're not centralized. Basically, one of the things I think the committee, our committee, has to look at is the question of centralized versus decentralized. That overhangs everything we're talking about. And we haven't really addressed that as a committee. And that's fine, because I don't think we're necessarily at the stage where we should have addressed it yet. But that's something that has to be looked at. Back in the day, most of it was centralized. Today, it's largely decentralized. So we, that's something I think we need to look at. And the final thing I'd say is that going forward, the town, we've talked a lot about appointing committees tonight, and I was a beneficiary of one of those in the Roads Committee. But going forward, the town may want to consider a permanent committee that sort of oversees services. You know, you got them across a whole bunch of different departments, and so that they could oversee the services, offer it in, possibly make recommendations as to services later on down the road. Because as I say, this is constantly in flux. Onward to question 5 of Mayor Bass's questions. Why 400? Well, all four recommended 400. And the reason they recommended 400 is sort of wrapped up in what Great Blue said, which is that they have a 95% confidence level of 400 with a less than 5% margin of error. And that's fairly good. We did talk about going to them and saying, what would it take to get that margin of error down? And the answer is, you don't want to pay the money. So this seems to be a sweet spot. You can satisfy what you want to do, and you've got a decent margin of error, and you're coming at a price that is reasonable for the, for the purpose. Next, there are only three dedicated centers, so what's a dedicated center? And while there wasn't an agreed definition, we, you know, the committee has talked a lot about a community center being a place where people from a particular community gather for social, educational, or recreational activities. That's fine. Dedicated to us meant the town had called it, a town called it a community center. And so we had, we had two or three that called it a community center. Three were town-owned. That was the question that mayor asked. That's what we found. There are only three town-owned community centers. There are two privately owned community centers in towns, and we have that up there at the bottom. Sherman and Stonington both have privately owned community centers. Moving on, question 6. I'm not gonna spend any time on this. The question was, what else is out there? And this is it. There are sports facilities in a variety of places. And then there are other towns- And then there are other towns that sort of fluctuate between something that involves senior, senior citizens. Some share the municipal buildings with the, with the community center. It's all over the map. And mostly, it seems to be driven by money. Number seven. How many community centers have not-for-profits in them? Had rented to them? One. One in Milford. And if you look at that, there, the Boys and Girls Club was asked by the town to do something. The, the deal was, you get, you pay $1 a year in rent and you pay for everything. It's possible we might be able to come up with something like that, but we haven't found any yet. Yeah? Yeah, Greg is making a good point. We looked at about 50 unique centers along the way. We didn't find this one. Not-for-profits. A few have approached us. I think we've talked about them at great lengths. I'll mention the rip-off, the four. The culinary center, robotics and beyond, the amateur radio association, and literacy volunteers, all contacted the community center committee about being part of a future community center. We have not been approached by any for-profits. On the other hand, I think that's, that's something the town has to think through. If it was a service-oriented for-profit company, it might fit. And it might help to free costs. But nobody's raised their hands and said they want to be part of the New Milford Community Center. No for-profit has gotten, has said that to us. Is that mine or somebody else's? Sounds like mine. Mayor Bass's ninth question. How were, were costs determined? And how did they compare to other towns? Or did we find costs for other towns and their community centers? The answer is yeah. We pulled together some preliminary figures. For, in town here, we only really looked at Pedecon and East Street because those are the current spaces that have a community center involvement that was within our purview. We, these numbers are, need to be validated. That's, we think, in the next phase of work by the committee, by the community center committee. One of the things you'll see on our last, our conclusion slide, and I'll break the news now, is that we're going to try to do a detailed cost analysis as part of our ongoing operation of the committee from here. We did briefly look at a cost of new building, but really, that was beyond our scope. We have some ideas about that because we, and I'll show you in a couple of slides, I think on one of Sizemansky's slides, some costs we did uncover. And any new building cost though really depends on what the included services are and where you put it. So it's kind of hard for us, before any decision is taken, to march forward to say, oh yeah, it's going to be $622 a foot. That's, that's kind of difficult. And it's got to be 35,000 square feet. So that concludes Mayor Bass's questions. He probably has more. But that concludes his questions for the moment. So I want to move on to Councilman Sizemansky's questions. His first question is, we said we'd look at costs of various sizes of buildings. And we did do some of that. We looked at Newtown, which cost about 400 a square foot. It's a big, big operation. We looked at the renovation in Wilton. That cost in the twos, 257. And we looked for renovation in Newington, which was 411. Now, you renovate something in Wilton and you renovate something in, in Newington and you spend about 50% more. So you actually have to drill down and look at what's really going on there. So the numbers themselves, while they have, they are, they are a benchmark, they really give us nothing. We have to decide what we want and then go out to price it. We, we, this again, sort of a repeat of what we said on an earlier slide. We did look at East Street and JPCC. The key here is that they scale beautifully. I mean, if you look at the numbers of one at, at 24,000 square feet, the other at 75,000 square feet, it kind of, the numbers kind of scale. So the, the numbers are proportional from one size to the next. So we think it's completely possible to scale the New Milford building from 10 to 70,000 square feet. But that would not work if we're talking about something that would be a new build, of course. Moving on. The second question. Composition and operational structure. This is similar, another question that Pete asked. We did look at that. One of the things we didn't do was review the library. And we didn't do that because the building utilization committee was told not to do it. We followed the lead. We have learned that, that the library expansion will add four meeting rooms and 20, a total of 2,400 square feet of additional, of meeting space. Only, only which 600 or so is additional meeting space. But there'll be six different meeting rooms. We did not review maintenance costs. We did not review grounds costs, mowing, mowing and planting and things like that. And we have, you know, our work is, at this point, still an interim and working document. There's, there's more to come on all of those in the next phase of what the community center committee is doing. What services programs do we provide? Well, I, I think you all have, you know that Councilman Sizemansky provided us with a comprehensive list of services that we have actually already given to you guys. You already have it. We are pleased to see it, shorten our workload, and it's nice to have it all in one place. Comparison to other towns as regards services. Basically, our view is that other than aquatic programs, the work that was done by our precedent committee and our utilization subcommittee, both these committees, other than, other than aquatics, we think we meet or exceed what other towns are doing. So we don't have to take a backseat of anybody on that. The question is, do we want to do more than that? Do we want to do it differently? But we're, we're in good shape that way. Question five. What additional services do we think townspeople would like? Well, we did a survey, right? So, and tracked on what the 2010 POCD survey said, which was essentially that aquatic-related activities top the list. The swimming pool being most frequently mentioned. That has to be validated because the fact that the people mentioned it, great, but not that many people mentioned it out of 1,400 that responded. So, what's your, what did you say, 27?
25, 18 splash pads.
Okay. About 45 mentioned pool or splash pad. One thing we found by meeting in Pedecon is that there's a real need for improved HVAC. We'd have to survey for that. We just know, we know that at a profound level. So just put that in there. Pete, Paul asked about what's the potential revenues here. We've had documents before. It's about 48,000 a year from the not-for-profits who have expressed an interest. You know that, that's culinary, who's going to pay 1,500 a month. Robotics and beyond at 1,000 a month. And thrift mark at 1,500 a month. All that's 4,000 a month, 48K a year. We talked briefly about educational components, and there seemed to be interest. But we didn't get into that deeply enough, and it was not a feature of great note in our survey. Might be something we want to look at more carefully. But there's a lot of offerings of educational things around town already. And Paul's work shows that. So it's, it's unclear to me that we really need to do it. And we felt the way to do that was a bit, how we would go about doing that was a bit unknown there. Okay, did we coordinate with, he crossed the space utilization committee? We think he means facility utilization committee. And the answer is no, we didn't. Greg Mullin attended most of their meetings as our spy in the sky. But one thing we can draw from what we know is that the town is not short of more meeting, meeting space. It's got plenty of meeting space. Moreover, this again gets to that question of distributed versus centralized. And the answer isn't simple. But since we don't need anything more, then the question is, how do we know what we're utilizing today? And one of the things that we've uncovered is that, that the town has a software program, MyRep, which isn't, doesn't seem to us, and we can't access it to find out what's going on. Maybe you guys can. But if it were available and transparent, we'd know that, gosh, that particular room is, is used too often. This room is not used at all. And we get, to your point, we get more efficiency across the resources we currently have, which is a long step towards deciding what we should be doing. And Paul asked us about, have you thought about filling the existing space? And the answer is no, we haven't. We're busy trying to find out what the space was and who would want more of it. I will point out before I leave this side that this question of centralized and decentralized has been on my mind a lot. And the answer isn't simple. We've got issues of convenience. We've got issues of parking. We've got issues of suitability for purpose. And all of that has to be wrapped up in whatever, whatever decision we make. Onward, question eight. He asked, of the 30 towns or so, how many had a dedicated center? And as we say, dedicated in our minds versus shared, dedicated was a way for our committee to say, the town had named something a community center. It wasn't, we didn't go beyond that. We didn't go in too deeply about that. Twenty, there's 20 towns, about 66% of what we surveyed do not have a dedicated center. Six towns appear to focus primarily on outdoor athletics. Four towns, a community center is really a senior center. And in three towns, they're sort of co-located with another municipal building like the library and the town hall. And I, I put a link in here to Newington's center, which is exactly that. There's, what's that?
I'll just be sarcastic. I can't click them.
Oh, I'll be helping. The Mortenson Center is actually a new town hall and a new community center in the same facility. So that may be an interesting model going forward. The 20, his 20 item question here, we had already supplied. We did that last week. And under 10, question 10, multiple definitions. We're back to the multiple definitions. No single definition. Most companies that we looked at have something that you could loosely call a community center, even if they don't call it a community center. One of the things I would mention, and this is about us, not about the market study, is we didn't look at services provided by church groups in town, although we know they have community space. And we know they have services that they offer to the community. That may be something we want to look at as well. They, they want to do more, they want to do less, how that plays in to whatever we need to be going forward. Any people falling asleep with all the questions? Pools, yeah, pools are a big deal. Paul asked about, what did it cost to construct? What did it cost to maintain? First question you got answered there is indoor or outdoor? And if you, and then you've got issues of time and whether there was something there already. We've looked at, great, 20? 20 towns. So I'll just, you see the ones here, you see Cheshire, Overhead, I'm going in. Cost recovery is 65% of that. Wallingford is renovating now with 46, 4 and 1/2 to 6 million with a pool and splash pad. You remember, some of you remember the aquatic study of 2002, 5.7 million that was turned down in a referendum. Some others that are not on the slide that I'll just briefly mention. Rawling, North Carolina, enclosed pool, 2007, 24.5 million. Elk Grove, California, enclosed pool, 2015, 20.3 million. Wayne, Nebraska, enclosed pool, between 6.6 and 7.5 million. All over the map. All over the map. So we have to, before we, before we think about that, we have to actually decide, you know, what do we want? Is it going to be an enclosed pool? Is it going to be 50-meter pool, eight lanes wide, splash pad, locker room? All the, all the bells and whistles or not? Moving on, question 12. Current, we, he asked, he said, we, and we had said on, on September 10, the current agencies based upon our interviewing of them said that they're satisfied. And the real question asked was, what do you think, as a committee? And so, we think that social services utilizes their space efficiently. We are not sure about that for the youth agency. And we recommend further study on, on their space. Moving on, parks and rec, again. They appear to do a good job with their office space, the public space. It's, doesn't look efficient to us. We tried to use a standard for offices of 200 square feet. And those of you who have been at Pedecon and have seen the configuration know that some of those spaces are heroic. I worked in, I worked for a Fortune 500 company. I never had an office as big as one of those. So moving on. We are moving to Councilman Sizemansky's penultimate question. Under eight below, we talked about in man communities, what rent do they charge? So we looked at 10 towns and none rented space to nonprofits. As to space utilization, precedent committee found Milford, which we had talked about. The Milford charter says they got to provide it, so they, they didn't want to, they didn't want to pay for it, so they brought in somebody to do it. And that's what led to the dollar a year lease. Space is provided for free. Okay. Now, my swan song. We think, we think that what Milford currently provides meet or exceed what other towns provide except for aquatics. We think that some of the facilities are underutilized and some are clearly inefficient in the way they operate it. In our survey, most people were pretty satisfied with what we offer, but 47% by saying, by writing in something, 40% of those surveys, a little over 700, we're not 700, were interested in the things that are listed up there. Pool, splash pad, exercise, more pound fields. We reiterate our, our plea for better HVAC. So the next steps for the community center committee are two, two things really. One is, we're dividing the committee into two functions. We have four people now, two. One is cost, a cost subcommittee that's going to look closer at determining costs of future and any, any current and the future community center services. The second is better opinion research. So it'll be, our outreach group will continue and will be augmented by a few more people. And assuming that you approve it, that their, their view will be to determine what services citizens want and what they're willing to pay for. Because that to me, if we don't do that, we haven't done our jobs. And so my last point on that is that we, we think that the town council should help design the objectives of the survey. I've just been spouting off here, and you guys may or may not agree with what I just said. You should be the guys who say, these are what we want, the objectives of the survey to be. I think at that point, we can leave the design, the question design, the survey design to the professionals, the pros. In our case, we're suggesting Great Blue, and they can come up with, with the questions. We also think though that we ought to expand that stakeholder idea to include people in the town as well as people from the agencies, so that we get proper representation in any questions that get asked going forward. So our, our last step, we hope you approve the Great Blue proposal, and we can get on with the rest of our work. And I did, I do have a snarky voice. Do you have any questions about our answers?
Any questions for Mr. Robs?
I do. You mentioned that the MyRec program needs to be used in the, first of all, thank you so much. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the flow, the thought process, and I like how you didn't use the slides. MyRec needs to be utilized more. It's not a new, a new subject or the first time I've heard this. Are there any barriers that you saw from your conversations about them actually utilizing that? Because
I think it's well.
Okay.
Well to use it.
Okay.
I don't tell you that well of person.
No.
It's a well person.
Will, he'll be here later.
You mentioned, you mentioned a couple of times in some of the other towns, when there are shared services between a municipal center and a community center, it was a matter of money and economies of scale.
Yeah.
Is there a dollar amount in particular across those entities that said, yep, when you, when you get to this dollar amount, you have to share services?
Well, it's, it is a step function. There's no question about it.
Okay. Okay. Any idea kind of the range of the step function? Or I can just leave you with a question, that would be a question.
Yeah, leave you with a question, we'll come back to you with a better answer, it's a step function, which it is, that's true as far as we know.
Again, I'd just like to thank the committee, and I don't mean to preempt anybody else's questions, but one of the reasons we adopted a new process to have the information so much earlier for us before the meeting was so that we didn't end up staying until 11 o'clock every night and peppering, peppering everybody with questions that might be in the information. So I for one-
I appreciate that.
-would like to take some time and not rush to anything, and I want to digest what they've shared, because some of this is new information for me, and not make a decision tonight as a result, but maybe come back on our next town council as we've done with some other topics. But that's just where I'm at, because I don't want to shortchange the good work that was done tonight.
Okay.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Good spokesperson for this whole thing. The MyRec program, you said you haven't looked at it yourself, Greg, have you?
Yeah.
And the way that it could work potentially for all spaces is if someone actually inputs all that other space.
Correct.
So that's where Will comes in.
Sure.
And I don't believe anyone's ever asked anyone to sit down and do that. I don't know if it's a gargantuan or could be done in the afternoon, I don't know. I don't know the program that well. Okay, so it's not a question for you, it's a question for us to take up as we've been spending all this time and good volunteers' time and efforts, why haven't we done that? Mayor, council, agency, department heads, why haven't we done that? We've got committee upon committee looking at facilities, looking at grounds, looking at everything we've got, and nobody bothers to use a piece of software that we have. So that's kind of frustrating to me. I agree with Lisa, I think you've given us, thank you for making it more concise and paring it down. And I just have one question, because you guys are familiar with the data, the centralized versus non-centralized. And the, to me, the fact that, because we are a rather spread out town, as you know, that and the fact that the majority of people polled were happy with the services that we had, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And so the way that they're happy with it is in its current, which is not centralized, right? Okay, just so that definition follows, okay.
Let me, if I could, that's really important, what she just said, are you sure that answer's yes? Because I think the question, I think the way I understood the survey was you asked if they were satisfied with the current program offerings, not the location of those offerings.
They're satisfied with their way to obtain and utilize those services. I'm sure you didn't get into too much weeds.
Was that the question?
No.
I don't think that was the question.
The actual, a lot of comments were directed at having to, first of all, there was a, I think, a fundamental question in the way the survey was, was designed, in that people didn't know if we were talking about Pettibone and what happens after Pettibone, or were we talking about something that had nothing to do with Pettibone? So there was some glare around the answer to whether they were satisfied. A lot of people commented about locations. You want to talk about that?
No, I don't.
So, okay, so what would be helpful then, would be some type of stratification of the answers about locations?
Okay.
Some kind of somewhere in, like a bar chart.
I think, Mr. Oaks, that the thing that's kind of been a bugaboo for me is that it is, and it's no one's fault, it's almost impossible to discuss what the town wants when we have a quasi, what's been called a community center, not just quasi, that's what it's got a title and it's got a sign.
Exactly.
So I think it is impossible for people to not relate to that when they say, yes, I like it, and that could be based upon where they live.
And it could be either way. I mean, they could, they could say they like it because they think you're talking about Pettibone, or they could say they like it because they think you're not talking about Pettibone, so it's-
So there's one of the things about a survey and whatever that points out to me, but I think you did a wonderful job, and I would like some time to review it and maybe communicate with you regarding other questions that come from that.
Walter?
I don't mind being your position as a committee at all.
We don't either.
And, part of the presentation is pie in the scum. And, you know, you're talking about aquatics, you're talking about swimming pool, there was no way would I vote for a $25 million swimming pool.
I'd be there with you.
Pardon?
I'd be there with you.
Okay. And here, for 20 years, we've been arguing about modernization of the library, and finally, something is going to happen. I just, you know, and then you talk about people that are already in John Pettibone. It's a work in progress right now. You gotta give it time to see, to see what happens. Too soon to simply say, it's not working, shut it down. You got, you got, you gotta be patient, you gotta be patient with it. Yeah, there are areas now, but you've got to be patient about that. And you want other services, what kind of other services do you want, and who's going to pay for it?
There you go.
Okay, I'm done.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want to get back to the survey and be very careful, I read through the survey, and it says, you know, based on survey, what do they support, a community center? It's like, town agencies whose role is providing in-person services. Well, that's what does Pettibone, it's town agencies that provide service.
Yep.
Educational, recreational programs, people, you know, that type of thing, and then it's got, many residential, local nonprofits, possibly for-profits, should be in there. Well, that's because we've been talking about that for a year now, that they should be in there. So I mean, I just feel that we got to be very careful in, in the wording, and I'm glad that's why we're talking about a professional company, because the wording is just so important. Because as I said, I'm reading this and going, a lot of these answers, these questions are just based on what's already there and what we want there. Did you want to interrupt me? You can go, and then I'll-
Yeah, but when you're done, I can go.
No, you, because I'm going to go with different change topics.
Okay, yeah, so on, so on that particular topic, I liked what you said, which are different than the slide words about the town council should be among the town stakeholders to weigh in on survey design, absolutely not. You hire a professional, wait, you actually said objective, but the, but the slide says survey design, so I just want to make sure everybody heard that, and here's why it's important. Because if you start meddling with the professional you've hired for good money in the survey design, you're going to introduce confirmation bias.
That's why I changed my parse that, in my pitch.
I wanted to make sure everybody heard that, because I liked it a lot.
All right. Back to, I, I kind of agree with what Walter says, is, you know, we have Pettibone, we're using it, let's kind of ride it out, until this $5 million for Pettibone, $5 million for East Street comes into play, and that's, I think, when we have to make decisions. We already have, you know, three, three town services in there, and if some of the projects we're talking about with East Street happens, we might get a fourth with Board of Ed. I, I'm not against putting services in there, but I do think that if, and there is no business talking to us now, but if someone comes in and says, this would be the perfect spot for our business to come to town for manufacturing, because it is in the manufacturing part of town, that should be, that should go away, and we should find other homes for that. So I mean, I think whatever we do, because I know Pettibone's always in the room, anyone that goes into Pettibone, anyone that uses it, has to know that it could be temporary, because it is a building, it's going to need a lot of work, it might not be worth it. $10 million, $10 million if we can build a brand-new building, we could probably get a nice start in something that might be more, a much better fit for that than, than we have. And you know, that's why, I just think this whole community center and Pettibone are just two completely separate issues, and we've kind of morphed them into one, and I think that's been the dangerous part.
The dollars are something that, you know, your committee couldn't, there's too many things before you can actually start putting prices on it. One thing that you did equivocate to the best of your ability is, in a building that's being, I don't know, half-used, there's one of the three agencies that is using that space efficiently, and efficiency equates to economy. And I think they do a fantastic job of it, I couldn't say more about that. If we could take that little segment away, that would be the best thing to do. But if we even, as someone says, we have to be patient, patience is good. In the meantime, we're opening windows and letting heat out, and turning the heat on and turning the heat off, and we have people with rooms, as you said, heroic was a really good word for that. Napoleon might have liked one of those rooms just fine. And I, I think that while we're being patient, we shouldn't be sitting on our hands. I think there are some things that could be done by our agencies, by us, not passing any work off here, but we're, every day that this goes on is a day that windows are open and heat goes out. It's a day that a room has two people that used to hold 25. And I think it's something that we don't put our mind on, because there is this mindset that we can't get rid of. But maybe if someone started working on that, we would have a better grasp of what is involved, because now we have a number that is a, it's a good guesstimate maybe of what it costs to operate that building, but what if we were to try to make it, just starting with one part of one agency, to make it more efficient? We'd have a better idea of what it really would mean to fix the HVAC, the, da-da-da-da-da, all the things we've heard about. And then there's that other half of the building that's not being used. So, I mean, in the middle of all this, and I know your committee's been tasked with a lot, and we've got committees upon committees on committees, but it's just, I think sometimes we, along this way, we've lost sight of, because it's being used, nobody thinks about the fact that it's very inefficient, except for that one area.
No, I agree.
So, oh, for everybody I meant to, I agree.
Yes.
All right, so in my opinion, the most important part of our committee is public outreach. We need to find out what the public wants before any decisions can be made, so that we can provide that information to you, so you can help with the decision. You know, we're not in the design, the use case business, we're in the, in the public outreach business.
Absolutely.
And just while you're deliberating about this, I think it's important to remember that, we're doing this so that you guys, the legislators, can make it educated, the best educated decision possible. And that's only possible by knowing what the people want.
Right. And the only way we can make that decision, Greg, it's for the people, it's not us. And the only way we can put out that decision, as we do with anything, is we have to have the cost of it. What is everything determined that we do? The library, 20-some years, it all boils down to, everybody's very, everybody loves that library, well, it's going to cost me in my taxes. Everybody loves whatever it is, everybody'd love a pool, what's it going to cost me? So that's why I'm saying, is that sometimes we have to put the cart before the horse, but I think with all the time and effort that's spent on this, that that's why I'd like to see somebody put some thought process into, what is it really costing us to be so inefficient, and maybe what would it cost us to be more efficient?
Mr. Scaler?
No, I agree with Katie. You know, I don't know if we should really be in the business of being landlords. When you open up, you know, letting other businesses in there, whether nonprofit or not, anyone who's been in the building knows that it's going to have to be maintained and stuff, even off-hours of what the, with the town, you know, they're there till at 4:00 or 5:00. So if you have other organizations in there on the weekends, maintenance, it's probably, you know, one of the largest one-level buildings in town. And anybody who's been in the building knows that the windows, knows that the roof and stuff like that, and, you know, as Walter would said, we need more time. This is a big project. It's probably, it could be even bigger, not with the high school, but up to the level of more than, you know, the lighter itself, and that took years to do. So we're getting, throwing all this information at once, and it's, it's something that we've got to digest and go through, and there's going to be more questions than answers, I'm sure, ahead.
I agree with you about taking time. I personally agree with that.
But that's my, my biggest, my biggest worry is that when you say $48,000, well, then, you know, how are we even doing the lecture if you're going to break that up? Is it going to be under the guise of triple net, who's taking care of the outside, who's taking, who's locking the doors, facilities are now going to be part of that building?
There's sort of two ways to look at that. One way is, you know, you've got high operating costs, and you're, you've got no cost recovery now. How much, are you willing to separately meter places to get 48 grand? Probably not. So to your point, you could, you could land on either side of that one.
My feeling is that it would be more of a stress than a financial burden if you weren't making enough money on the square footage, to recoup the costs of the maintenance and danger.
The issue there, in my mind, we're in that building every couple of weeks, the issue in my mind is, if you price the common area of maintenance into what a not-for-profit should be paying for the space, no one's coming anywhere. So that's just another way of saying, let's not have any. So I think Katie's point about, let's do what we can to make it efficient, and then we can make that decision later about whether we're going to pass the cost through, or pass some of the cost through or not. But the 48 grand, assume they did, assume you guys wanted, at least it's 48 grand we didn't have the day before.
Mr. Esposito?
Just quick back to question nine, $5 million for Pettibone, $5 million for East Street, where did both those numbers come from?
The Board of Ed did a relatively recent engineering study, K, D, and G, that went from top to bottom of East Street. And while they prefaced that most of that doesn't need to be done now, it's worth looking at from a capital, a five-year capital plan point of view. And also with the Board of Ed, they've done their own capital, five-year capital plan, which is in excess of that. So, you know, without exaggerating numbers, we wanted to be sure that, you know, when you look at the building, they had an understanding that there is a capital cost to them. And then compare that to what cost they knew, because the truth of the matter is, a lot of communities are built new because they're much more efficient.
I, I hope I'm not struck by lightning, but I must admit, for the first time in a long time, well, probably for the first time, I gotta agree with Greg.
Can we get that on film? Can we get that on film?
Turn the camera this way. Hey, Greg!
Okay, Greg, you can retire a happy man now.
So, I don't know what I can say after that, but to follow on to Tom's point, I thought the more interesting number for me, and I'm not an expert, so you can poke holes in this, was the $200 to $400 per square foot renovation cost, that other communities have, have come up against that. Those are big numbers if you multiply the amount times the square foot, I mean, anywhere from $5 million to $25 million.
Yeah, sure.
Well, one of the reasons I say this, because I know the roof at least at Pettibone is $3 million bucks. That was a number that was thrown around for many years. I mean, these numbers, you know, Walter and I toured it a couple of times, when I, you know, after a couple of elections, I mean, it's, it's a big number over there. Both buildings have their challenges.
And if you, just follow on your point for a second, when we did our, our survey, we could account for about 40,000 square feet of community center-like activity. So if that's too big for East Street, too, too small for Pettibone. So I think that you got to roll that around in your squash, too.
Mike?
My bigger problem with a lot of this is, there was no need for community center until we had an empty building, and said, what do we do with it? And we put some municipal buildings in there, and we're talking about, with the nonprofits. You know, is that might need to be answered, is, do we need a community center in this town? I mean, I am biased, because I am the president of Colony School, so it'd be a great location for us, but I also look at the private sector, and we keep talking about things that we want a community center to do, but, you know, there are private, private companies in this town that try to offer those services, and I don't want to undermine them and that type of thing. It's just, do we need, do we need this community center if this, most of these services have already been being done, just spread out through town? You know, we got to watch out for these, we're doing this huge renovation to a library, and in a couple of places, a couple of towns, the library was their pseudo-community center, and that's going to have meeting spaces. And it's, it's just my fear of anything that moves out of downtown hurts New Milford, because what makes New Milford special is our downtown, and having people in downtown. And when I drive through town and I see that the car, the parking lots are packed and there's stuff going on, I'm excited, because it means that the businesses that are there are getting people shopping and going to their restaurants. And, and that's one thing that just, I, I just want that to be, you know, it just makes me nervous in moving anything away from the town.
So that point, Mike, is exactly what I think we all agree on, is that when you mentioned pool, skating rink, sports facility, everybody's, yeah. You mentioned $100 tax, 200, 1,000, this is going to cost a gazillion. I mean, that's really why, I think, when you say, no one mentioned community center, we used to have one across- we used to have one across the street when I was a kid, so there's a lot more people now. But I, I mean, isn't there a premise? Not, I can't think of who it is now, but, you know, you fill up what you have, when you empty it, it'll get filled up again. So, we had an empty space and it got filled. If the Board of Ed had gone ahead to move over there, we might be having a completely different conversation, but they didn't. So, we have to deal with what we have, and I think you, you said it correctly, is that it's, you don't know, a new building might cost 10, 10 million or whatever, but we don't even know what it costs to keep the one that we've got going. You know, those are things that we really, to have a complete conversation, you need all that info. And you guys have done a great job with what you've gotten, but you're right, some of it isn't under your mantle.
And we have more to do.
Yeah, so...
And so, for that reason, and, yeah, for the first time I have hope, actually, because the presentation, I think, demonstrated that we can get there. The committee has kind of gone through their forming, storming, norming, and it's got some traction. That always takes time. Um, and again, because we're having such a robust discussion now, I think we need to table this and really make sure we're clear about what we want the committee to do as next steps. I think to do anything else tonight is gonna be premature and not fair to them.
Right. Oh, I agree. Your survey that is giving us...
There's a lot of information here.
Some information to see the, some, I, I think there's some degree of validity in what's there, about who wants what, or what they like better than others. We also see what it costs to do certain things. So, that's, that's enough for us to ruminate on, I think, for the next couple of weeks.
Walter?
Is that a motion to table that then?
It is a motion to table the discussion.
Second.
Did everybody get their opportunity to finish their questions?
Yeah, I just, I'm just, the one thing, I just wanna comment, because you made the comment about the, um, nonprofits. And nonprofits, you know, these, these nonprofits do, do services for the town, and two of them are job training and robotics beyond and the Colony School, so it's not, it's not a black and white thing with, with some of these nonprofits. It's also, our, and literacy, you know, does, I'm not sure what, you know, the radio operators, they help, but they do help citizens of this town, and we're talking about getting other educational services in that school. So, i- i- it's not as kind of dry as you may get seen as far as getting nonprofits in there.
And your, your point is, is, is good, but my, my point is that what kind of financial burden will add to the school? And he had mentioned it'd be 40,000 square feet of community service, correct?
That's the entire town right now.
Right, there's fixed costs that we're already paying for the heat.
But there's wants and there's needs.
Like, exactly.
No, I know, but if we're there and we're using it, I'm just making the comment.
But we're, we're not gonna just be fixing that area. As we have to, for the landlords, we gotta fix the whole building. So, we can't just say, okay, we're gonna fix this room and fix that, we have to fix the whole roof, we have to heat the whole building, so we have to not just look at just the three organizations that are coming in.
But that's why I said, it's, it's anyone that does go there might be temporary.
Mr. Hurley, Mike?
Did you have something to say, Jeff?
I have a question to the, uh, to the attorney. There's a motion on the floor to table, and a second. Does that, does that kill discussion, sir?
The motion to table is actually out of order. It's not an appropriate motion.
Okay.
You need a motion to postpone to a date and time. Just attending a CCM workshop two weeks ago, the facilitator explained a motion to table.
Lisa?
Okay, I retract my motion to, to table.
Postpone to the, uh, November 13th regular council meeting?
I would like to make a motion to postpone this discussion until the November 13th town council, or do we...
Yes.
Second.